We usually have prayer before our meetings and I've asked Mr. Hart agree if he would come and lead us in this prayer at this time.
Heavenly Father, we are in real trouble in this country. And we know that you don't just wave a magic wand to fix things, but you use people. Help us to know what we can do to serve you, to fix this country. And I thank you for these fine fellows up here that serve our community and take care of this little corner of your world, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Let's all stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, we'll call the order. Tuesday, August the ninth, meeting. We welcome each one of you here tonight. We welcome those that are watching on HDC Channel 3. We also welcome those that may be watching on our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have any additions?
No, no additions tonight, sir.
Any commissioners have anything?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to approve. We got a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. First item is approve the minutes from 7/26/2022, regular meeting. Any additions or corrections to those?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. We got a second.
Second.
We got a second. We promote Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. Remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities? We have none tonight, so we'll move on to reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Ms. Kim, okay. All right, we'll move on down to county administrators' report, July financial report.
Basically, let's see, these are the numbers for July. We had an actual revenue of $743,378, which is kind of normal for this time of year. The expenses came in at $1,4515, which was, is less than our average monthly expenditures. And that give us a monthly variance of a negative 261,137. To level a cap reserve of $1,867,838. The real property is low at $9,997, which is expected this time of year. The lots came in at $381,846. EMS fees were down some this month because of a couple of reasons I can explain. It's $76,502. The vehicle tag fee came in at $128,537. And I've got a little note here. We'll get over to this one. If you'll look, that's showing what there's a reason for that. During the years, during the budget year, this board approved different expenditures for different things. And those numbers are not reflected in these numbers at the top. These numbers stay static. That's what they was from October 1 through. Everything down below has been approved by the commission and will be balanced out in the audit. That's why I always say these numbers are un-audited. Once the audit is done, audits will be corrected. But just to kind of give you an idea, we've probably spent $600,000 this year for capital stuff. That's $478,000 on the design of the jail and some equipment we bought for the road department and some used vehicles we bought. So it comes out about $637,000 altogether. So if you take that off of that $380,000, we're still about $300,000 to the good as far as what we budgeted for. Any questions on that one?
That $380,000, is that a new record? It's close.
Well, I believe it is.
It's close. No, it is. It's, it's fair.
Unless, unless we hit it last year, it is for this year anyway.
Yeah.
The Paines Creek report, and I know don't listen to, does, these expenses seem to be running higher this year, but this account's paying the expenses for Milltown too, the grass cutting and stuff like that. So that's why those expenses run a little higher. The gross revenue for the month was $27,167. We had $5,366 worth of cancellations. The actual expenses was $13,987. That give us a monthly variance of $7,150. And year-to-date, $81,750 in reserve. Permits for the month, new houses, six, all the other things, outbuildings, garages, whatever, at 24, for a total of 30. Any questions on any of them?
No, it's a decline, and that's what we've kind of been looking for.
Well, yeah, well, you take, if you add up, if you add up the new ones, there's a lot of new, the 54 out there hasn't completely been built yet, so.
Right.
And you got carryover from July into August.
Yeah, we had, I can't remember how many we had in January or December. Yeah, well, December wasn't the big push, was it? Everybody got them before the station started. And the only other thing I got is Thursday night, there's another conference of plan, planning meeting at the Ag Center, starts at 7:00. I invite anybody in the public to come, sit in, give them your point of view. That's what these things are for. But again, it's a 7:00 Thursday night at the Ag Center. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Terrell. Appreciate that. Forest Chairman's report, I would like to say, I do appreciate the Hartwell DDA, Hartwell Main Street, Kiwanis Club, and those guys going down to our courthouse and helping out with doing some landscape chores that needed to be done. I'd just like to say, thank you. We appreciate that. It's not that we don't care. There has been times that we have reached out to contractors to do a professional landscaping service for that area, but they're in the same situation as the rest of the world. They don't want to take on new contracts because they can't get help to add on to their businesses. So it's kind of put us in a dilemma. And Terrell's done a tremendous job. He has, you know, found people that would do jobs by job, to pay them week by week, so that we could get the grass cut that we needed to get cut. I mean, we've got a lot of grass here in this county to cut, but I just wanted everyone to know, it's not that we don't care. It's, it's just that we've had trouble finding people to, to take on these jobs or to enter into a contract with them, so. But we'll keep working on it. I mean, like I said, we've lost our detention inmates over there. That's put a hinder in everything too. That's added to what we've had the grass to cut here, so. But we'll keep working at it and we'll keep trying. But I did want to tell those folks, we do appreciate what they have done. And I know myself and the other commissioners have been getting questions about when is Commissioner Brown going to be instated and, you know, what's, where are we at with that? And we're working on it. There'll be some things that, if everything can get done, maybe this week, he may be up here next meeting, so. I know y'all are anxious for Mr. Brown to take his seat. We're anxious for him too. I mean, because that will be a great help to this board. But that's all I have this time. We'll turn it over to District 1. Commissioner Bennett, you have anything?
I'd also like to thank all of those that put all the hard work in around the courthouse. I've got several emails about it, and actually saw some people up there working last weekend. I'd like to really thank you for the work that y'all do up there. And like Commissioner Sayer said, it's hard to get anybody to do anything. In our departments are, that we have, like our rec department that normally pitches in there, they're, they're swamped. They're just, they're covered up. Talked to Jim a couple of times in the last week. So I'd just like to thank all of y'all, and I'd like to thank all of our county departments for the job they do do. Because my phone's not been ringing off the hook the past couple of weeks with details, people wanting different stuff. It's, I know a lot of people don't realize, our phones ring every day from different people, different little issues. Small issues to us are large to them, so we have to tend to them and see after them as well. Anyway, I'd like to thank all of our county people and the people that participates in helping our county and helping to keep it clean around the courthouse. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
I agree with Commissioner Sayer and Commissioner Bennett about what they said about the DDA cleaning up at the courthouse and some of the clubs. Appreciate the job that they did doing that. I'm like Commissioner Bennett, I did receive a couple of emails about it and appreciate them taking it upon theirself to do that. And I hope eventually like, that we can get a, get a contract with somebody to help us keep up the county grass and lawns and stuff like that. And also up there today, did we have inmate detail from Whitworth?
Yeah, we did. We, we made a special request, we begged, and one of the guards volunteered to come in on a day off to take that crew up there to get the mold spread. So, yeah, we appreciate that.
And also, I really appreciate them doing that for us and hope we can get some inmate detail started back up soon. Working in Hart County to help pick up litter and help us anywhere that we need them throughout the whole county. That's all I got.
District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I want to start with District 4.
Okay, you want to do the District 4.
We are, we are responding to some of the things, but there's been some litter issues and some, some road issues, and I'll be getting with Commissioner-elect Brown to address some of these. And there's one, one of these items on the agenda later on tonight. I'm moving to District 5. I want to echo the same things that my colleagues have said about the volunteers that get out and, and help do these things. I can tell you that these, these guys up here, we spend a lot of time working on things, a lot of time behind the scenes. But I definitely want to thank Kiwanis Club and the volunteers who got out and worked around the courthouse a lot. And as, as these guys said, yeah, it may not be pristine to everybody's standards, but I want to take, and one of the emails that was sent, and I cannot sit up here idly without defending our county employees, because our county employees make or break us. And this is a cheap shot, and I'll call it a cheap shot, but there was a statement in one of these emails that says, "It is obvious your county people do not have the expertise or time to take care of the main green space in our downtown." So let's talk about our recreation staff, because that's who, what they're talking about. And let's just tell you what all they got. Number one, they're short-staffed, just like everybody else. They're down, they're down 25%. One person. Couple of weeks ago, they hosted the District 7, 12 and under All-Star Tournament here at the new recreation facility. They also hosted the Georgia State Little League All-Star Tournament. Nothing but positive comments about the fields and the condition of the facilities, and even our own folks have talked about how good these fields are. So if they don't have the expertise to, to do what they're doing on the ball fields at the courthouse, there's something wrong. It's a time issue. That's what it is. And I challenge this person to go look at these fields and come back and, and let's discuss this. These guys, as I said, are not fully staffed. They're in the middle of a busy summer grass cutting season, and they cut all these other departments' grass, what we're trying to get cut. But here's another thing that's going on, the majority of the public, the public does not know. We've had a 50% increase in our football signups this year. 50%. Last year, we had 165 kids that signed up. This year, we're at 247. We can't get helmets and equipment for these kids. These guys are out trying to get the equipment and supplies so that we can have a successful football program. In addition, they're maintaining the fields, they've got the long point park, and they've got other stuff that they're doing with grass cutting. And they manage, the ones who didn't have the expertise managed to coordinate getting lunch put out today, and it looks very good. So I will commend these guys. And I'll be the first to say, and I'll be the first to defend county employees when they're giving everything they've got and they're busting their butts. They're out here in the heat of the day, and I will not sit back idly and allow these guys to be attacked in an email like that. And that's, that's all I got to say. And I definitely want to commend Jim Owens and his staff for, for their efforts. I also want to commend Terrell. A lot of people don't know this, and he didn't, he didn't know I was bringing this up, but and Kim as well, they are putting in a ton of time with this jail project. And Terrell's trying to get the budget done, and he's literally drinking from a fire hose, as Commissioner Teasley, and I talked about the other day, he made that statement. But Terrell, we appreciate your efforts, and I know there's, there's things that, y'all both are, and I was going to get with Kim next. And Kim, we appreciate your efforts, because if it weren't for the support we get from both of you, and we, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in. So I just want to let you know I appreciate it, and that's, that's all I got. But I just felt like this needed to be addressed, because this was a, I felt like a cheap shot at our, our county employees.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dorsey. We'll move on into old business, 12A, that's a public hearing regarding finance and lease and purchase of new jail. Can I get a motion that we enter into a public hearing? What we'll do, we'll get a motion and a second, enter into a public hearing. Those who want to speak concerning the jail or the financing of the jail, will be allowed to speak for about two minutes, and those basically are the ground rules, okay? So with that being said, can we get a motion to enter? And I'll have Ms. Kim, the one we've been talking about all night, to present what we're, the lease purchase and the program and all. So can I get a motion to, that we enter into a hearing process?
I make a motion that we open up the floor and begin the public hearing for the jail.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. All right, thank you.
Can I address one more thing that I should have said earlier?
Okay.
In my comments that I see him saying out here now, Mr. Brown, I have an email from Judge Michael that he can swear you in tomorrow.
All right, there we go.
I just got it this afternoon.
No, you won't.
There, we'll call Mike Cleveland to come and get you right now.
Can we ask the Superior Court Judge here to appoint Mr. Brown, who was elected, to fill the remaining unexpired term of Mr. Carter, Commissioner Carter, who resigned? So Judge Michael says he'll do that. I've got some paperwork to do, and I'll try to get to that, but maybe we can make arrangements for late tomorrow afternoon, to know how the judge can. Okay. Are y'all okay with that?
We're good. All right, thank you. We love it when things come together. All right, we'll move on to 12B, amendment to Article 8, Section 66, addition of Bass Road, Turner Road, and St. James Road, new through, no-through truck list routes.
I make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second. Okay, we got a motion back to Commissioner Bennett, and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. All right, thank you.
Can I address one more thing that I should have said earlier?
Okay.
In my comments that I see him saying out here now, Mr. Brown, I have an email from Judge Michael that he can swear you in tomorrow.
All right, there we go.
I just got it this afternoon.
No, you won't.
There, we'll call Mike Cleveland to come and get you right now.
Can we ask the Superior Court Judge here to appoint Mr. Brown, who was elected, to fill the remaining unexpired term of Mr. Carter, Commissioner Carter, who resigned? So Judge Michael says he'll do that. I've got some paperwork to do, and I'll try to get to that, but maybe we can make arrangements for late tomorrow afternoon, to know how the judge can. Okay. Are y'all okay with that?
We're good. All right, thank you. We love it when things come together. All right, we'll move on to 12B, amendment to Article 8, Section 66, addition of Bass Road, Turner Road, and St. James Road, new through, no-through truck list routes.
I make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second. Okay, we got a motion back to Commissioner Bennett, and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. And, all right, we'll move on to 12C, GSP vehicles. Terrell?
Basically, GS, we've bought several vehicles from GSP. They've been Dodge Chargers. We were told last week, or Chief Deputy Whitmore was told last week, that there should be some Tahoe's coming up for sale pretty quick, and those things go within 24 hours. So what we're asking, and we do need three of them, two for the tax, state's office to replace those small SUVs, and one for Lisa to use for IT to keep her stuff inside, which she had to put in the back of a truck. And what I'm asking for is for y'all to authorize the chairman, once we hear something, to make that decision to purchase them or not, without, you know, waiting two weeks for a meeting.
Because they get gone.
Why don't we just authorize a number and just go from there? That way you know what you got to spend.
Yeah, I don't have the price on them yet.
That's fine.
Yeah.
authorize expenditures to purchase three, if they are, they are.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, every y'all want to have it. I just want them elected personnel to have the charge of it.
You want to, it takes, it don't put all the pressure on them.
Oh, come on, that's what I was doing, to put it all on me.
He don't need some more.
Well, and one thing about, just for public knowledge, these vehicles, for the most part, are not road, the vehicles you see riding up and down the road, chasing vehicles and stuff, these are mainly administrative vehicles.
Correct. The ones we bought so far come off the governor details.
The, our maintenance guy, Ed Cleveland, has checked out several of these vehicles and they're in tip-top shape, and we're getting a good deal on them, so.
So your motion?
I'll make a motion, you want to get three? That we authorize the chairman to purchase up to three of these Tahos or Chargers, whichever he deems.
Okay. I'll second. All right, we got a motion back to Commissioner Dorsey, a second back to Commissioner Bennett.
And that money will come out of the ARPA funds.
Correct. Open money?
Correct.
All right. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. Okay. All right, we'll move on down to 12D, community service. I think, Commissioner Dorsey, do you have this?
Yeah, and I did not get to talk to the probate judge today. I apologize. I have spoken to the magistrate judge a couple of times. And basically, what we're looking at here is, we all know we got a pretty serious housekeeping problem at a transfer station. And we can let some of these folks that get community service go out there and help clean up and help out up there. We just have to have somebody to supervise it.
Does it have to be somebody that's post-certified, or do you know?
I don't think so, not, not for the local.
Not because they're not incarcerated.
Can't Greg just supervise their stuff out there?
No.
Can?
Somebody's got to keep up with their time and.
Well, I was going to mention that. Why can't they not pick their sheet up here and turn it back in here?
Well, they probably could, and actually Greg may be capable of signing off on their time.
He would be.
No, I can check in on that with the judges and see, whatever they prefer. I'll do, I'll sign off on it, or Greg can sign off on it. There's no problem. We'll handle it whichever way the judge wants.
I was mentioning here for a reason, that way the time would be kept more properly, in my opinion.
Well, it probably will happen on Saturday mornings.
We're aware of that, because that's when people can do their stuff, on Saturdays.
Well, what I want to say, I mean, I mean, Greg, I certainly don't think Greg would lie about any, you know, misstating things, so it's same deal, maybe you just sign off on the hour that they're actually here.
But the individual might stretch the truth a little bit, himself, I'm thinking.
Well, that's, that's a possibility too, but we can make a copy of it from what we sign and hold it.
A lot of them might not be able to drive, drive back and forth anyway, might be dropped off.
Correct.
Yeah.
We'll handle it whichever way the judges feel comfortable.
Let, yeah, let's get, let's. I think it's a great idea, though. Commissioner Dorsey, get in touch with the probate and magistrate and see what we can work out, and then we'll go from there.
Right. We'll handle it whichever way they want us to handle it.
Okay. All right, we'll go on to 12E, Emily Brown, King's Bench Retreat.
King Bench, nobody did.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you the grunt of it. Basically, the, the, I ain't got it on there, the plat I put in with the packet, and you'll see the following emails go along with it. They first emailed me about this in 2020 with a preliminary drawing, and at that time, you know, I take, you go ahead and see what the health department says. Since the 2020 date, I talked to them, I didn't hear anything back from them again till a month or so ago. And they sent back in the soil samples and all, and it still, it still hadn't been approved by the health department, but they got the soil sample. But by that time, we've been through the moratorium on things like this, and again, we had a December deadline for anybody that had anything out there to bring it before us, and this did not come in, in December. So you see what it did, they want to cut off four lots off of 170-something acre parcel up there. And I've told them, I said, you know, that's, that's above my ability to approve or disapprove, so I brought it for the board. Y'all can consider it however you want to consider it, but.
Well, didn't they go back and redraw it?
No.
No, no, no. No, this is the original sketch they done.
And based on what we see here, I know Commissioner Dorsey and I talked last night about some of this, and this is exactly the same reason that we've rejected.
And it's other plaits. Why we redid the subdivision ordinance.
And, yes, because of the way the lots are laid out, and so unless someone's got a motion to approve this, I don't really see it being approved.
I'll make a motion, we deny approval based on the fact that the lots are, the layout of the lots, which we denied in the past, does not meet the criteria of the current ordinance, and it didn't meet the, it was not submitted in time for the moratorium to get approval, and we were very open and transparent about that, giving people plenty of time.
Okay, you got a motion to deny, based on those reasons he stated. I'll second. We got a second back to Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four o' vote. We'll move on to new business. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four of eight. We'll move on to new business, resolution to grant authority, Stevens County Hospital Authority doing business, Stevens County Hospital to open on and operate healthcare facilities inside the county limits of Hart County, Georgia, in accordance with the Georgia Code 31771. When we first look at this, I mean, as we're talking about, as well as I have been told, that Dr. Zuberg's retiring, and Stevens County Hospital wants to put an office in there, and, but the problem I have is when we say Stevens County Hospital, here and there referred as hospital, to open on and operate healthcare facilities inside the county limits of Hart County, Georgia. That's a broad term right there. That means more than one facility, but I've asked Ms. Kim if she would go back and look at this resolution and rewrite it to specifically specify that specific office at 125 West Gibson Street, and I furnished that to all the commissioners. Did you get a copy of it?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
We have the administrator of Stevens County here, if y'all have questions.
Yeah, please, please, yes.
My question was, we were not clear in what's that location or in position, so we may need to change our reservation depending on what you guys want.
Yeah, I'm not hearing any reservations before this exact moment, so I apologize. Yeah, Dr. Zuberg actually approached us as he neared retirement to continue to operate his practice here. We have the bandwidth within our orthopedics program. We are one of very few centers of excellence accredited by CMS in the state for orthopedic surgery, and we were glad to take on that responsibility and honored that Dr. Zuberg reached out to us to continue his practice here, the legacy that he's built. So that is the scope of what we are looking to accomplish here within Hart County.
Okay. So you would be good, that's your full intention, is just opening this office up at this facility right here?
That's correct, yes. We're only looking to continue his operations here.
Okay. And so you would have no problem with us designating you an address to that effect?
That is completely fine with us.
Okay. All right, any other commissioners have any questions?
Glad y'all coming to Hart County.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion to adopt this resolution as amended, that's put before you? Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second back Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion from any of the public, anybody? Okay. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four of eight. All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the various requests, Michael and Elaine Bishop, 217 raised road, the front setback. You have a diagram there?
Basically, this is the lot you're talking about, highlighted there. Notice all those houses down there are...
Less than the 40.
Within the 40 foot. Closer than the 40 foot, what I'm...
I have a site plan.
If you would, stand behind that podium so they can get a good look at you where that came.
I have a site plan, but we bought this property about 30 years ago and have retired and wanted to build there. It's mostly older homes, it's like a dead-end street, and I think the environmental health has made the rules stricter for septic. They're requiring us to have over 30 feet of septic line between us and the core property. And so in order to build a reasonable-sized house, which is still going to be just a two-bedroom house, we need that variance 17 feet, so that our house would sit like 23 feet from the road.
So you've been in touch with the state Health Department and made, known your...
Yes, we have sent them a couple of things. The second one, we think it is approved, or will be. We haven't got the final on it yet, but that's what they were requesting, was that much line.
I don't think we can give the variance until you get your septic tank permit, because there's got to be area for repair.
We included that on there.
I understand, but she needs to make sure, here's why I'm saying this. We've had situations in the past where people would go and get a septic tank permit for a two-bedroom house or a three-bedroom house, they end up building a five or four-bedroom house. They don't have room for the drainage field repair. We do have a building inspector now.
Right.
I talked to Lily about this today.
Oh, okay.
And she has not approved this, but there's another one that's similar on this, in the same area. And I just think, to protect you guys, before you make an investment, you need to make sure that she's going to approve that septic system.
Well, we can't go forward at all until she approves it, because we can't submit anything to building.
I don't think we can give a variance until...
Yeah, and we're to the point now where we can't even finalize house plans. We don't want to invest in $1,500, $2,000 with the house plans yet, but we were told that we should get the variance first, because if we can't get the variance, then we can't, we basically probably can't build the house.
Well, I think...
I don't have a problem with it if you get your septic permit.
If we, if we can get the septic issue straightened out, I think we're okay.
I don't think anybody's got a problem with it.
No, I think that's the census here at the board, but we'd rather put these things in order to protect you.
Protect you primarily.
Yeah.
Right.
So if we can get Ms. Lily to sign off on that, then we'll work with you.
I understand. Right, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is variance request, Maya Simpson, Birdport, on the front setback. Okay, she, you would like to come forward?
Which one is this one?
I believe you have yours.
I did.
I wasn't prepared to speak, so...
That's okay.
Yeah, I do have my septic permit from Ms. Lily. So I bought this lot to be closer to my folks. My folks live right next door. This little cove development, I think, was established in the mid to late 80s, so it's been there a while. And so I'm requesting for my house, I'm trying to keep my house in line with my neighbors. You can see the way my neighbors are set off the setback there. So right now, my site plan shows that the house would be 30 feet off that front setback. And I actually bought the lot, I think, before some of the new ordinances came in to play, and I had, before I bought the lot, I came over and spoke with Mr. Partain. My dad's been helping me a lot, so I apologize if I have a little bit of nervousness in my voice.
Jerry Turner's a contractor.
Yeah.
On the house. They have all their claims there. The permit process is set and waiting on this period.
Yeah, and the site plan shows both the primary septic tank lines, Ms. Lily's approved that, and where the tank's going to be, and then also the backup lines are on the site plan, and she's approved all of that, and already issued the permit.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's an order, the only thing that I will say is, when we allow these setbacks to be, we grant variances. Myself and Commissioner Sayre have been out riding in these areas, these are narrow roads, so you don't have to keep cars out of the right of way, just so you know.
Yes, sir.
Because when you move forward, it gets closer.
Yes, sir.
Because we all make sure we can get ambulances and emergency vehicles through.
Absolutely, absolutely. And my, because of the layout of my house, my garage is really only about five feet into that. I'll be about, you know, 35 feet, but the majority of the house is way back on that lot.
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, I'll second.
I'll second.
We got a second by Commissioner Bennett, in regards, like you said, the rest of the neighborhood. When this subdivision was developed, we didn't have the ordinance as we do today, and that's one of the reasons we are going forward with this. So any other discussion, anyone? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four of eight.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the lost agreement. This is between the cities and the counties, it's collected.
And basically, what everybody has agreed for, and actually the City Hall has already voted for, make it official, is to maintain the same percentages for the next 10 years of loss as we have for the previous 10 years. And there's the percentage, City Hall is 21%, City of Rosson, 4.25%, City of Byersville gets 1%, and City of Kenny gets a 4%. And this originally was based on population, and even though we've had increased population, the growth's been pretty much all over, so the population numbers have not changed much since the original, the original agreement 10 years ago. Like I said, City of Hartley is the major population municipality in the county. They're the ones we're required to actually negotiate with. But again, all the municipalities have always been in here and got a portion of the money, so it's just a standard agreement that we agreed last term on, and everybody was with an agree on it this term.
I'll make a motion, we authorize the chairman to sign the lost agreement on behalf of the Hart County Board of Commissioners, at those percentages that we already established.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's four of eight.
Just so everybody knows, we use this money to roll back property taxes, to roll back the mortgage rate. 100% of it is used for that, and nothing else.
And if you'll see, every month, we report on what we get, and we're at $350,000 this month, so we're as open as we can be about what comes through.
All right, next on the agenda is item E, GDOT rumble strip request. I think Commissioner Dorsey asks us to put on...
Yeah, we've got several state highways that come up to intersections. One being one of the more dangerous intersections in the county, and this is up at 51 and 77 at Turner Concrete. 77 coming into 51 has no rumble strips on it. It takes all the school traffic from North Heart. You come through there at night, if you're not familiar with that area, if you come around that curve, that stop sign's there, but you better be on the brakes pretty good. And I'm going to make a motion that we ask the Georgia Department of Transportation to install rumble strips there, and then we also have some county roads that we need to look at, that we've resurfaced, that we need to put these...
Yeah, I think we've got some that's got rumble strips or just completely wore out, they need to be replaced.
And I don't know if there's any DOT safety grants out there that would pay for those, but...
I don't know, we can't use, we can't use the striping money. And the last one we had down was about $2,500 a road. I don't know what or how much they've increased by now, but you could use block money, Road Department of Block money, whatever, if we don't have any DOT matching fund.
But I'm going to make a motion that we get the county administrator to reach out to GDOT, especially on that 51 and 77, because that's a pretty dangerous intersection.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey for this one particular intersection.
For that one particular one, and then...
With GDOT, okay.
We'll take care of the others later on, I just wanted to discuss that.
Is there any other state, I can't think of another state highway that may need them.
Coke Fair Highway running into New Burton, man, they come through my yard there and tear my grass up. Get this done, sorry.
You're responsible for them rumble strips.
I guess, I don't know, I clean up their trash out in my yard.
I mean, if we're going to ask them, we might as well put them... That's right, ask them. We might as well put a request in for all of them we think we need.
Yeah, they took out the...
That way, if they bargain down, we may get the ones we really want, so you can have that.
Just thankful I got a yard, they can just keep going over there.
Are there one, any on the other end of Coke Fair Highway where they're running to 181?
I haven't done there, there's nothing there.
Probably just need to get them, look at them. Okay, all right. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. All right, now that you mentioned the striping money, where are we at?
We're waiting, we're waiting on the trucks to get here.
Waiting on, we done got a contract?
Yeah, we got an agreement with them, right.
Okay, all right, we're good. That's well worth knowing. All right, now we come to the part of the meeting where we have public comment, and if you're here tonight and you would like to speak on something concerning county government, you are welcome to come to the podium and speak at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, come right up here.
I'm Jeannie Majer. I live at 24 Jefferson Avenue, so I'm not sure which one of you guys are mine, right smack in the middle of Hart.
The commissioner.
I'm part of a city in Martha Ward, 380.
Behind Pabst.
That'd be me.
In those condos. Okay, nice to meet you. Okay. I'd like to discuss cleaning up the senior center. It is a really nice building that's been underutilized. There are a couple of functions presently going on, which are very good. One is about three hours of activity in the morning, and the other is the Meals on Wheels, both of which are wonderful programs. The rest of the building is a mess. It really needs to be cleaned up. I've got pictures here...
Yeah, I'd like to see them.
...of some of the problems. The first few are holes in the floor, in the linoleum. The rooms, the main room is beautiful and taken care of. The bathrooms are in good shape. The exercise room has six or seven stationary bikes all lined up where you can't use them. There are two other rooms that are being used for storage that we would like to see cleaned out, with all the trash taken care of, and the porch would be a wonderful thing if we could get it cleaned up. There's pictures of that, too.
That's across the back, right?
Across the side. If you're facing the front, it's on the right side. And there's also probably 20 grocery carts sitting out there that have apparently been sitting there for, nobody can remember how long, which would be nice to have them removed. I noticed in the budget for the senior center, there wasn't any line for maintenance and repairs, so I'm not sure where that would come from. I did hear y'all say that you had $381,000 somewhere, that you might could touch a little bit. What we would like to do...
That was what we just voted on, is the lost tax. We can only, by law, we can only use that for mileage, roll back on your taxes.
Okay.
And that's the true, with a lot of money that's in our budget, it can only be used for certain things.
Sure.
And to answer your question about the building, we have a budget for maintenance of government buildings.
Oh, it's just not listed on that.
Right, it's just not listed under it. That's usually your...
So there are funds to take care of things like that.
We do have a money's got, too.
And we would really like those holes taken care of. People are tripping, and it's, you know, it's a liability having them. But as far as the cleaning goes, if y'all don't have enough people to do it, or enough finances, we have volunteers that would like to come in and take care of that.
Okay.
I have been told we cannot allow volunteers on the property.
We have them over the whole county.
Terrell. But volunteers are apparently doing the county grounds at the courthouse, so I'm sure your liability policy is fabulous and would take care of all of that. I have someone that would be willing to bring in a dumpster. All we'd have to do is get some young people to take all these broken tables and chairs out, maybe get some volunteers fix the screens on the porch. The back door does not close, it's not safe. I know Jacob tried to... on the porch. The back door does not close. It's not safe. I know Jacob tried to cut the grass for a while, Randy told me, and someone stole his lawnmower. So, it's not well locked up down there. So, but, you know, it's, I moved here about a year ago, and the senior center has a really bad reputation here in town. Half the people said, don't bother. And the other half didn't know where it was or that we had one. We've got a lot of active seniors moving in the county, a lot of people that would love to be able to just go down there during the day, play games, work on a puzzle, check out some books, you know, keep the good donations, move the freezer that's out on the back porch somewhere else, take the tires out of the storage room, you know, just clean it up a little bit. That's what we'd like to do. And, you know, we would be glad to do whatever it takes to help Randy get it under control so we could use it from 8:04 instead of just 9:30 to 12. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else with a comment? And we will address some of those things. And we will.
Thank you.
Look into our liability and see if there's a possibility we can do volunteer help down there. I don't know. We'll.
Maybe we expect to hear something. I've been working on this for a year.
Oh, really? This is the first time you've been up here, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't reject something here. You've got other plans and things you want to do down there, correct?
I'm not.
When you was in my office, you was talking about what y'all wanted to do after this. And I can't remember what it is. I mean, I don't, but there was some activities y'all wanted to do after this took place. Is that correct?
Like have people come in and play games?
No, there was something that's specific, I thought. Because you talked to Brandy about it first, correct?
That is only one game.
You talked to Brandy about it first. We called around all the other senior centers to check on whatever that activity was. I don't remember what.
Bridge. It's a park.
But again, nobody else, we couldn't find anybody else that was doing the same thing. I mean, just so we know how to do it.
We went to Bowersville, was it? No, Carnville. No, I mean, excuse me. Brandy, yeah. But there, senior center was beautiful. They had a little table set up where people could come and enjoy themselves. Right now, we use Janie's house to go play.
I've talked to you. I've talked to y'all. Y'all talked.
Captain Schramm for turn.
No, ma'am. I have been covered up for.
He's been covered. That's why I talk about that earlier. That guy is swamps. But we did check around. Myself and Brandy checked around for what y'all wanted to do at the time. And I'll be honest, I've talked to many people. I don't know what. But we couldn't find another senior center that had a policy or a procedure for whatever, whatever y'all wanted to do. That was part of the problem.
Okay.
I'd say, Terrell, just have Brandy get it cleaned up. She can, she's the department head. She needs to get it done.
She was perfectly willing to have a cell phone. And we would be very much help and do whatever.
She needs to coordinate. She's the manager. She's the one that needs to be the one to take care of it.
Okay.
But she said she didn't have the authority.
Yeah. She's got the authority now to get it done. That's her responsibility.
Carol, I believe you said that you.
Policy we had called.
Huh?
We've been trying to find a policy for it.
I understand. But I'm just talking, Brandy needs to be the one to coordinate and get the place cleaned up.
Okay. All right. Any other public comment, county business? We appreciate your input tonight. We do. All right. If not, can we get a motion to adjourn and go into executive session personnel?
No.
No need? Okay. So, we won't ask for that motion. There we go.
No need to do the personnel, unless you've got something.
Okay. Take care.
All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second. By Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's for a vote. Adjourn.
We need to sign these.